October 19th. Order? Ask Commissioner Malir to open us with invocation.
Go with me, please. Dear Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day and for the rights we have, our blessings, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us today as we discuss important issues and as we make decisions that are meaningful to ourselves, our families, our neighbors, our community. Help us to make these decisions in fairness and in truth, in your name. Amen.
Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Records show we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, do you have the minutes from the October 5th meeting in the packet? All accept the motion.
What's your next answer?
All in favor, raise your right hand. Recognitions, and a couple of folks have asked to speak. Going to line up your requests to speak when the item comes up, so we can deal with it at the same time. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting. Hopefully, we'll get through every item. Commissioners, I'm going to jump down to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda have been through necessary committees and received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda. So if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. The consent agenda carries. Commissioner Skinner, you have the first one. We have somebody who would like to speak. Pam? Pam Lightsie?
Coming through the door.
Coming through the door.
Pam, come on up. We were just talking about you.
Do you understand the term "skin of your teeth"? Also safe.
I apologize. I think it was a little messy.
Whose fault is that?
Is that a complaint?
No, that is not a complaint. Again, thank you Chairman Duncan and County Commissioners for allowing me to address you at this time. For the record, again, my name is Pam Lightsie. I'm a resident on 113 Brittany Way, just to kind of give you an update. I did email everybody on Friday to let you know. I would like to say thank you very much for tabling the decision in our last meeting, October 5th. We compiled many issues that were discussed. When we had our meetings with our commissioner and the buyer, the work started right away after our last meeting. I wish we were at a point where everything was agreed. The owners agreed that a third-party attorney should be on the document. So there's a nonpartial author of the document. Since the owner of the said property is a real estate attorney, our first meeting with the attorney's office was Tuesday after the holiday, which was last Tuesday to be used. We received the draft over the weekend. There were two more revisions. The latest was just emailed out. The email addresses that we had has a 5:15 today, so we're working on this all day today in hopes to have it ready. We will deliver the others tonight, so not all the owners have access to the latest revision. We are asking for the additional two weeks to finalize the details. We want to make sure everything is documented correctly and runs with the land, and a covenant is suggested by our county attorney in the last meeting. The piece that seems to be missing is clear communication from our insurance company. They reached out to us today and reached out to the underwriters for clear direction on liability, since this is a private road. Granting us the extension of the two weeks will allow us to get the answers in writing as well. The questions that we posed to them pertain to the increased traffic as a commercial business and residential. We originally asked for 30 days, but we're grateful and thankful for getting the decision to table for two weeks, but we unfortunately have not completed this. And working with 26 owners, different schedules, an attorney's office, we respectfully asked for the additional two weeks, so we can come back with finished documents. I'm including a copy of the draft for the record as well as the minute.
If you have something you want to give to us, just give them to us.
Okay.
Registered request to speak? Please.
Jonathan Crawford, 884 Willow Lake, Evans, Georgia, 30809. Just picking up from our two weeks ago, you know, this process started three months ago. Correspondents with the HOA started over eight weeks now. Glad to grant the additional two weeks in hopes that we can beat a resolution by this meeting, given its periods within the contract and the fact that this really is a private matter outside of zoning. Take it to a vote. I do know the buyer. I've spoken with him. It's just as much in his interest to get a contract that would help and that's fair for both parties, or they can mutually share on some of these costs long-term, because he got just as much of an interest in that road and maintaining it long-term as the HOA. I know following our meeting two weeks ago, I sent an email. It's verifying that if they needed any help in this matter, I know they decided to get an attorney, but you know, I understand the attorney from a legal standpoint to make sure the document's binding, but with regards to the content of it, you know, I was glad to give some input. I actually went on the record two weeks ago without even speaking to buyer or seller to give my thoughts on what would be an equitable solution to the problem. I haven't received any correspondence except for today saying that they had just gotten a draft, that they would be in touch once they had a chance to talk with their HOA further. So that's great. Like I said, we've got a buyer that's willing to work with them outside of this zoning. I'd like to go ahead and take it to a vote today. Thank you.
Questions? Comments?
Pam, you have an insurance issue that you're waiting on?
I talked with them. Out to their underwriters.
Right.
To make sure that that liability would be covered as well as we added that as our last revision to the covenants. And, you know, I understand, he says, three months ago, in our notes, we were just contacted September 17th in regards to this, and went to our first meeting as planning and zoning. So for us, it's been a month.
Thank you. I was hoping we would have this issue settled today, but due to the insurance problem, I will make a motion to table until the next meeting. December?
No.
No, November, what date will that be? Second? November 2nd? Second? Okay. Pull that time.
A second.
Now, it is a challenge in trying to tie things down, but it's a challenge when you're trying to let somebody move forward with their project and trying to do. One of those situations that it's not clear, and you just have to take the best paths. Comments or thoughts? All in favor of the motion to delay it till November 2nd? Raise your right hand. All opposed? We need to make another motion to approve it, or is it automatically approved?
No, you'd have to make another motion. If there's another motion, if somebody wants to make another motion at this time, the motion to postpone it failed, so if there's another motion that wants to be made from the floor, somebody can make that motion.
I would assume that would be... Would it die from lack of...
If nobody makes a motion, then the item would just die. I mean, at this point, it would be disapproved.
Make a motion to approve the request from R3 to S1 for property located at... Forces 064 and 065 for proposed right investment subject to rated interception, 2021.
There a second? I'll second it. No other comments? All?
I second it. Are you ready?
No, I seconded the motion, so say what you want to say if there's more to be.
Standing. Good long while. Move it one way or move forward on it.
I will say from the staff perspective, the covenants are independent of the zoning. I understand that they're trying to work together, and I think staff's been trying to work with them too. But they can continue any negotiations they have for covenants outside of this zoning question. This does not decide their thing tonight. They can continue to work together. I understand the neighborhood would probably prefer to wait because they feel like they have leverage, but they're using zoning for leverage. And I don't disagree with that approach, but they are two separate matters.
Any other thoughts?
The vote, this vote would approve the zoning. It's nothing to their agreement.
And that can continue, they can continue down that road of covenants.
Any other comments? On the motion to approve the zoning, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries four to one. On to Commissioner Malir.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 21-07, amending Chapter 18 to create Chapter 18, Article 11, broadband-ready community. This is coming out of my committee.
Second. The broadband-ready ordinance is a ordinance that would get us in compliance with the state rules as a result to being a broadband-ready community. We're in a unique situation in Columbia County that we're beyond broadband-ready, because we're only, one of the only communities in the state that already has a broadband network, but this will allow us to receive grant funding and other opportunities.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Do we have any speakers or presentations or anything before?
Not requested.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 21-42 to support Columbia County Local District Draft Map Title 2020 Proposed District Map V1.
This item is an item that we've been working on for some time. As you know, every time we have the census, we are required by law to adjust our commission districts to make sure that they're equitable. We do not have the final say in this. This is something that goes to the State Reaportment Committee, and it also goes to the state legislature. We were under the impression that the state legislature was not going to take up any local maps in their November meeting, so we have been working on this. Thank goodness, we've been working on our presentation, but we did receive a letter, not this past Friday, but the Friday before, from Senator Anderson's office requesting that all local maps, any request for local map revisions be to his office no later than October 31st. So that being said, staff kind of started scurrying around, working on this. We have met with the Board of Education. We have also met representatives of the Board of Education. We've also met with representatives of the Board of Elections, and we have the proposed map in front of you now. You will notice that the map, while the lines are not as clean as we would like them to be as it relates to everything being proportional, I think the more important piece is, is this map will pass all the tests that the state's going to give it as it relates to demographics, as it relates to having the proper number of people in each district. And I know there was a lot of discussion about we should not take incumbents into consideration when we were working on these maps. We were told the opposite of that, that we should take incumbents into consideration, not to write incumbents out of their districts. So we took everything into consideration we could. This has been a long process. This is probably our 20th or 30th, I mean, we have probably 30 versions of this map, and you can't really see it here, but if you look really, really close, you see some really small lines here, and you see some really small numbers. Every one of those make up a census block, and every time you change one of those census blocks around to another district, it changes the entire map. So we feel like this is the fairest map to Columbia County. Again, this is a recommendation that'll go to the reaportment committee and will also go to our legislative delegation. They could change it once it gets to Atlanta, but if we don't make a recommendation, they will just change it any way they want to. So we didn't want to make a, at least take a stab at it and try to make a recommendation for them.
I would like to say, Scott, that I know for a fact that there's a lot of work been put into this. You said that Senator Anderson came back, and we kind of had to get in high gear, but there was a lot of work already done before that.
Yes, sir. We anticipated it. We've been working on it for over a month, and even before we had the data from ESRI, we were doing it by hand. We were actually calculating by hand, but we wanted to be ahead of things, and good thing we were, because we'd really been in a bind had we not.
Everybody know we did not take this lightly. There's 20 versions out there.
At least.
You know, to try and get something, but it gets every district. There are a lot of cutting out of two districts, adding to the other two, and if you see, everybody's within, it holds within a couple hundred of all the districts.
So we're required to get within 10% of each other. I think the, we have one district that is 1.04% out. So we got all the rest of them down to less than 1% of a variation, which is, I think, again, is pretty good. And you know, when people look at the map, and I know people are going to look at the map and say, you know, why don't you just take this little spot right there and give it to District 2, or give it to District 4 and work it out? Well, the reason you don't is because there are over 7,000 people in that area, and there are about 7,000 people in that area. So that's what you would have to give up to make that one little spot work. So again, lots of little census blocks. It's not as easy as just drawing straight lines. It required a lot of effort.
In this, if I'm not mistaken, the precincts that...
Precinct, we did draw them along precinct lines. There's one split precinct, there's one split precinct that falls in here. You can see this area on this side falls now into District 2, and this area remains in District 3, and we do split that precinct. But in our conversations with the executive director of the Board of Elections, because of the population growth in that area, they were already going to have to add a precinct, and they were going to add a precinct to this side anyway, so we actually kind of did it for them. The rest of them are drawn along precinct lines, so we have very little moving of precincts to do.
Yeah, and I appreciate all the effort that was put into it. It was a lot of work, so.
I'd like also point out, if I may, that this only pertains to the local districts, has nothing to do with the State House or congressional districts. This is only for local, and so if you have other conversation or comments about the State Senate or State House or congressional, that that would go to your legislature.
Get the comments or questions? Since it's a resolution, we don't need the first or a second.
Yeah, you would go ahead and vote on the resolution. Make a motion to pass resolution, second that, and then vote on that. It does not require two readings. Once, if it is passed, we will forward this along with the resolution to our delegation and the State Reaportment Office.
I made a motion.
Your motion, nine seconds.
So it's been...
All in favor of the map, raise your right hand. Next item. Mahi, are you here? Hey. We're about to table this till December, well, not December, I guess the next meeting. You can come up and speak if you want to, but it's not going to be dealt with tonight. Your choice.
My name's Mahi Majonovic, 3713 Westlake Drive. This is in reference to Westlake Commons Shopping Center. 30 years ago, Reed Creek had one of the worst flooding episodes in Columbia County history. From that episode, stormwater fees were created and now the storm department. It's a big job to control what happens on Reed Creek and stormwater issues, but we have to be diligent about it, proactive about it, that we don't let something like that happen again. This development, do not misunderstand me, I'm not against the development, but I am asking you to scrutinize to the nth degree all the engineering protocol we have, and also to be creative in looking at this, that no additional stormwater comes off this site and impacts private property downstream. We have been very diligent in coming in before planning and zoning and before the commission in previous developments along Reed Creek, such as dermatology, the medical development that's above Reed Creek, the assisted living home. When Lidl had bought the four-acre site on the opposite side of Reed Creek, we worked with Lidl directly and got them to put in measures that were way above what the county required, because they wanted to be good citizens of the community. I'm just asking in advance that if and when this comes back up, that we look at every aspect of the engineering report, think creatively on how we can minimize the impact to Reed Creek drainage and to all the property owners below Reed Creek, which includes Bowen Pond and the silting issues we have. And these same comments about Reed Creek also apply to the new medical center being developed on, that's going to be developed on Bel Air Road, 15-acre site, because from my understanding, that parcel also drains into Reed Creek. Reed Creek is a very long creek. I think it's 13 to 14 miles long, starts in front of I-20. But that's my comments tonight. Appreciate it.
I believe the applicant has requested that we table this at a meeting point.
My understanding, to the next Board of Commissioners meeting, so that'd be November 2nd.
Chair, I'll make a motion to table item Tax Map 082, Parcel 526. Table it to the November 2nd.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Yes, sir. Item B2. I make a motion to approve the request for a major revision. Easement encroachment agreement for the property located at Tax Map 081, Parcel 555, subject to the conditions enumerated in the October 7th Planning Commission Report.
Second.
Scott?
This is actually the next two items, but this item before you is a retaining wall that will cross the property lines, and as you can see on the map in front of you, this will actually cross both line, both parcels. So there will be condition for a cold joint here at the property line, but because it exceeds the maximum allowable height, plus it is within a utility easement, it is before you tonight for a variance for height, and the conditions associated with that address that issue, and then related to the construction aspects, and that's why you have the cold joint and the other engineering building standards requirements. So staff is recommending approval on that for both this one and the next application.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Item B3. Make a motion to approve the request for a major revision and easement encroachment agreement for the property located at Tax Map 081, Parcel 556, in order to construct a retaining wall within the rear building setback, subject to the conditions enumerated in October 7th, 2021 Planning Commission Report. Scott, just a little...
That's correct.
Same as before.
I believe we just discussed it. Any other questions? Raise your right hand.
Item B4. I make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision and easement encroachment agreement, property located at Tax Map 077H, Parcel 178, to reduce building setbacks for existing and proposed structures as shown on the provided site plan, subject to the conditions enumerated in the October 7th, 2021 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This is for additional improvements on the residential property located here. This is primarily the new construction, as you can see here. As it was indicated, there were a couple of conditions included, that additional information be provided, or sufficient information, excuse me, be provided in the land disturbance permit to verify that stormwater will not be directed to the adjacent properties, and also that the reduction in setbacks apply to the existing areas that may be non-conforming on the existing structures, and then addresses the location as proposed of the smokehouse and other improvements. So staff is recommending approval with the conditions.
The applicant here today?
Apparently not. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Very rude, then, right?
Item B5. I make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from R2 to C1 for property located at Tax Map 073, Parcel 038, to construct a medical office complex, subject to the conditions enumerated in the October 7th, 2021 Planning Commission Report.
There a second?
Second.
And Mr. Ricky Wiggins?
Evening. My name is Ricky Wiggins. I live at 221 Bowler Drive, Evans, Georgia. My property acts up directly to this. First, I'm not opposed to the project. I think it's something great that can go in there in our community and very good. What I am opposing is that currently, familiar with that area, all through here, right now is wooded. Real thick woods.
It's thick woods, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. It's real thick woods. Actually, I think it may go all the way up to here and cut down, but it's real thick woods. The proposal, as it reads with input from the commission, was to put a 30-foot structural barrier through here. If you take down the current trees that are there that are 200 feet tall, people from here are going to look right down into my backyard. So I've got a pool in my backyard, got a cooking area, my wife, my grandkids, everybody spends time out there. My big thing is, is that the builder actually suggested in the beginning to leave a 30-foot natural barrier there. If that natural barrier is left, then that takes care of any concern that I have. I will not see the property behind me, they will not see my yard, my wife and my family in the pool. There is a 50-foot elevation change from the property up above down to my property. That's what gives you the line of sight to look down into my property, and not just mine, it's my neighbor's really start dropping off of my property. Where this road is, that's pretty much a level there, starts dropping off right about here. So and then that's just a heavy drop-off from about where that building is down. As I say, if you go with the original design, 30-foot natural barrier is left there, retention pond's going to be there also. If you leave that natural barrier, add an additional eight-foot wall on either side of that barrier. I have a privacy fence anyway on my property right now, so you know, that really, that takes care of my concern. And if you go down Bel Air Road, you look at the Bel Air Dental Association. And if you go down Bel Air Road, you look at the, that Bel Air Dental Associates, all the businesses through there, they have a natural barrier, plus it looks like a six to eight-foot fence separating the residential from the commercial property.
How about thirty-foot?
It, it is showing that as such? But what it shows on the plan is a twenty-foot structural here, and then it ramps out and there's a little bump out, I may not have drawn exactly where it is, but there's twenty feet from here to here, and then this part here is the thirty-foot natural buffer. That's what they're showing on the plan at, at this stage.
There's not a natural buffer down.
It says structural buffer.
Yeah, it's currently, um, there is vegetation, but they're proposing to make that a twenty-foot structural buffer, which means if they remove anything within that, they'll have to replant that at, um, at our requirements.
And what are our requirements?
Uh, they'll have, they'll have to put in a, um, buffer that is sufficient enough to cover that standard, which I believe is one to twenty or one to thirty. But, um, but again, we, we, in site plan review, we will catch, our landscape architect will catch that, and, uh, we'll probably be looking at a staggered, um, buffered situation, similar to what we do in most of those developments where it's not a, a wider width. We can stagger those and, and supplement that. We'll probably, um, most likely be looking at significant, um, tree species to kind of get that, if you're, um, initial startup. Again, that's all predicated on them removing everything, having to replant it. If it's still existing, then they'll get credit for what's there.
Oh, if all of the trees were.
I mean, based on the layout, there's going to be some removal because there's, uh, you know, a upgrade in the road structure that was there to what they're proposing. Likely, and by the looks of it, it looks also like they're shifting it a little bit so that they can, uh, make that work for the, um, the layout. So again, when we get to site plan, uh, review, we'll make sure that we are, um, adhering to whatever is ultimately approved by the board, but also, uh, within the standards and taking into consideration the concerns that citizens have raised, both at the Planning Commission, but also here tonight.
Or?
Yeah.
Uh, I can draw on this again and show you my, my concern. This is my house right here. And again, there's two hundred-foot trees all along this area. So if you take out a two hundred-foot tree and put in a twenty-foot tree, I'm losing a hundred and twenty feet of privacy in my backyard. But that, that's my only concern, that's my thought, is, and, and why would you take out? How old that, those trees are, who knows? But why take out vegetation that's currently there and established to redo it? Now, I understand right here, you know, that's only a twenty-foot wide area, and it, it goes along the road entrance to the school. So, you know, I, I understand that, wanting to take that out and maybe make that, you know, a different, different look there. But to take out those two hundred-foot trees directly behind my house and the neighbors' houses, I, I just, I, I don't understand why we would do that.
Sir.
Think they, they could do it, uh, with undisturbed, that thirty-foot undisturbed?
I'll never, I'll never say never, but what I've drawn here is where they're proposing the detention area to be, and so that would leave the ability, you know, at this conceptual stage, for that natural, that thirty-foot natural buffer to remain. Obviously, once we get into the.
You're by the road coming in though, right?
No, sir.
No, he's talking about.
I'm right in this area right here.
Yeah, right there. So again, there's a, there is a potential that this would all remain natural because there is no construction at the concept stage that they are at right now. They're not showing any impacts within that area. Once we get into full construction drawings, that we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to make sure the staff, that we can keep them out of that natural buffer.
Unless we put a condition that they can't, they have to leave a thirty-foot natural buffer.
Which we have, um, we have that condition where it does say install a thirty-foot structural buffer adjacent. So one of the things to also consider is, is while the trees may be several, however, uh, hundred, two hundred feet in height, if they're pines, they're going to be tree trunks with little vegetation. The str- the additional structural buffer will give the under-story, um, screening from the commercial to the, uh, to the residential. So that, that's also a consideration, and I think that's something that we'll also take a look at, and if there's an opportunity to supplement a lower story, um, in landscaping, uh, element, then that's something that we probably should look at.
Or we can just make it a thirty-foot undisturbed buffer.
Would you change your motion to undisturbed?
I, I, I'll change the motion to make it undisturbed.
I would like to see, is the applicant in attendance with that?
They may be.
Would you be able to speak to this and whether you could agree to such before we make motions?
My name's Frank Pittman with Pittman Engineering, uh, fourteen hundred Saxon Road in Watkinsville. So my, my original submittal was showing this to be a thirty-foot undisturbed buffer once we got past that rear drive. It was a suggestion of planning staff that I changed that to a thirty-foot structural because staff thought that the structural buffer would be thicker, and in their, their minds would be better for the neighbors because the structural would also require an eight-foot fence that the natural would not. So I agreed to that. Um, I'm completely fine with a thirty-foot undisturbed buffer, that was our original plan. Once we get, the, the section, the first section where the rear drive is would have to be a, a structural buffer because there's not enough width there once you put that drive in. Um, we've talked to Mr. Wiggins, I, I think they're, that that is in keeping with what they would like to see. But behind that, I'm completely fine with a thirty-foot natural buffer, that was our intention, and we would still put up an eight-foot fence that would be required with the structural buffer. So we're fine with the condition kind of being a, a hodgepodge of both there. Um, and, and that's what we've committed to them, and that's what we're committed to do. So we're, we're fine with that completely.
And you said staff recommended?
Staff is the one recommended change it to a structural buffer af- after our initial submittal as we were revising the submittal because they, they thought that that would be better for the neighbor.
Sterling, is that acceptable to staff?
Fine with us, make that work.
Mrs. Sterling, I do have one question. When you say undisturbed, is that going to prohibit, uh, the applicant from trimming those trees? I mean, I've got trees all over my place, they get out of order, okay? And, and sometimes they make a mess, okay?
No, I, clearly, if there's a need for, you know, if there's hanging, you know, trees, uh, that sort of, if there's something that's, you know, dead and diseased and needs to be removed because it is dead and diseased, then certainly they can do that. Um, you know, going in there and taking them down after the fact is a whole different issue. So yeah, they can do some maintenance is what we would call that.
We don't have any intention of disturbing any of that, other than if, if there was some disease or dead stuff that, uh, impact the neighbors, we, we would work with that, work with them to take that down because we're going to put a, we'll put that eight-foot fence, it won't ever be behind it after that. So we'd, we'd rather, what needs to be cleaned up, we'll work with the neighbors to make sure they're happy with that. We're fine with that.
Right.
Sir, does that sound acceptable to you? Very good, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
I have a, uh, motion to leave the, uh, buffer as it is.
Second will go with the thirty-foot undisturbed.
You just need to make a caveat to that thirty-foot undisturbed buffer, that the eight-foot fence is included in there, and you may have to disturb that buffer somewhat to be able to get that eight-foot fence in there as well. So just make sure that the motion includes the undisturbed buffer and the eight-foot fence.
Okay, I'll submit the, uh, motion to save the undisturbed buffer thirty feet and the fence, eight foot to your side.
Okay, good. Okay, that's good. Okay, we're good.
Chris, you got that?
Got it.
All right, so there's a motion and adjusted motion and a adjusted second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries.
Item, uh, B six, I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section ninety dash ninety-eight, list of lot and structural requirements located at Tax Map zero seven three, parcel oh three eight, for the removal of the maximum front building setback requirement and an increase of the building height, subject to the condition enumerated in the October seventh, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission Report.
Second.
Scott?
All right, two, uh, variances here. First one is the required front setback off of Bel Air Road. Uh, they far exceed the maximum allowed. Then the s- uh, second one is the height. Exceed the fifty-five maximum allowed in the district to go to no greater than seventy-nine feet. Does not apply to the one in the rear.
So you're saying we need a variance because it's too far from the road, not too close?
Far from the road. There you go.
Reason this is over the height is because the way the.
They're going to build a seven.
They're going to build a several-story structure.
I said seven.
Yeah, not seven, I don't, I don't believe.
Three or four.
Three or four, is my understanding, yeah, three.
Three.
Right.
Yeah. Right.
It's just.
Yeah, and staff, staff's been comfortable with that request on appropriate, um, applications, and we believe this one, uh, being up towards the front, particularly on Bel Air Road, um, doesn't appear to be an impact to the adjacent properties. Uh, again, they are staying within the, uh, fifty-five maximum height on the rear building closer towards the, uh, neighbors, um, so staff was recommending approval on that.
Any other questions?
Uh, item B seven, uh, I make a motion to approve the request for, for a rezoning from M two to M one with a conditional use for a car wash for property located at Tax Map zero six one, portion of parcel two one five four, a proposed car wash. Like to add a condition to the motion that, uh, traffic engineering examine the, uh, property excess, see if it needs a left or right turn lane, driveway excess, uh, including turn lanes, storage links, and/or tappers, uh, widening papers? Papers, another requirement for, uh, for Columbia County pros- uh, project access improvement policy.
So that's the same traffic conditions on.
That were on the previous property we just talked about.
On Owen Road, same condition.
So does your motion designate who pays for the improvements, or you're saying there has to be a study?
Has to be a study examined if needed.
Is there a second?
Uh, I'm, I'm trying to figure out how staff proceed with that, if.
That, that needs to be a condition that it be done.
It's, that's right, we, yeah, you can't just, we, in, in this case, if we make a motion that staff looks at it, you're approving it, and we look at it, then there's no condition that it be carried out. Um, if you were trying to accomplish that, what you're saying, you could put those conditions on there, if it meets said requirements, then the applicant must perform those improvements as a condition to the approval, if that's what you were trying to accomplish.
That's what I'm trying to accomplish, that, um, that if it meets that.
But that's, that's the way that would have to, you would have to do that. So it's a condition, right, that's correct. So you, you could, you could say an additional condition is that staff perform the traffic study, and if it meets the requirements, then the applicant would be required to per- to perform those improvements, or make those improvements as a condition of.
Rezoning.
The rezoning improvement.
I'll add that to the part of the motion, uh, that if it meets those requirements, that the applicant, applicant will be required to, to, uh, add those.
Improvements.
Improvements to meet, uh, condition of rezoning.
I were okay with that.
He does. Second.
I know, is there a second?
Second.
Question or debate? All in favor, raise your right hand? Motion carries.
Item, uh, B eight, I make a motion to approve the request for a change of conditions to the existing conditional use for massage for Tax Map zero seven eight, parcel one four nine, subject to the condition enumerated in the October seventh, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This is a change of conditions, the, um, spa, day spa is already in there in this, uh, building, um, they are moving locations. One of the conditions that was attached to the original approval was it was location specific to that suite. They are moving to the suite next door, which is a slightly larger suite. Um, and so they are asking for that change of condition to move that massage location basically one suite over. They are manding the current location and will move that entirely within the next suite over at, uh, forty-one sixteen.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand?
Item B nine, I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section ninety dash fifty-three, list of lot and structural requirements for property located at Tax Map oh eight one B, parcel zero zero four, subject to the conditions enumerated in the October seventh, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission Report.
Second.
Scott?
Yes, sir, sorry, my screen went blank. All right, this property is making, is wishing to make some improvements. You can see here the existing structure, the improvements here. Um, see the maximum, uh, setback, minimum building line of thirty feet. So they're asking for a reduction in the front setback. Also to, uh, approve the existing structures, uh, that are already approved. Um, there are some improvements back here and here that are perhaps, uh, within some of the applicable setbacks. The elevations are also a condition that they be generally, uh, submitted with minor, uh, modifications to that by staff. Uh, this is in, within the Westlake, uh, development, so the HOA will be reviewing that from an architectural review board standard, as well as the additional condition that gutters and downspouts be, uh, included to direct any stormwater away from adjacent residential properties. Second. Answer any questions?
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand? Carries? This next item deals with Fury's Ferry Road, am I correct?
Yes.
Fences?
Yes, yes.
Eric, are you here? I was going to say, one of the things we've been working on is a, uh, to develop an overlay district. Yeah, I'm going to let Scott explain, then we'll talk about, you don't have to come up yet. I'm just telling you where, where we're headed with this thought, trying to make, give some uniformity down the whole road. This guy, we have two Scotts.
We, uh, we, we were tasked with looking at, at the possibility of trying to get some continuity along this road. As you know, uh, some of the neighborhoods had neighborhood fences up that gave continuity. Uh, but we, uh, currently have this item for you tonight, asking for a variance. We have another variance pending, uh, there could be a lot more variances, uh, and with the amount of construction going on, corridor roads in Columbia County, um, we thought that it might be a good idea to at least explore the possibilities of providing a corridor overlay, uh, which would establish the criteria for fences, maybe being a little bit taller than our normal fence, maybe being a different material, so it would help with noise and those sort of things for these ones that back up to the road. Uh, so doing that, uh, staff has asked for some time to be able to put that together, uh, and we're asking that, uh, we have, actually, we, we would postpone this item uh, to our December meeting to take it up again. And by then, hopefully, we have everything in place for the corridor district, so we'd be able to, for the corridor overlay, uh, so we'd be able to move forward with, with this request. Uh, in the meantime, the applicant would just be able to leave his fence intact. There would be nothing that you would need to do. Um, but what we're trying to establish is having the fence have some sort of similar look all the way down Fury's Ferry Road. So we don't have a ten-foot and an eight-foot and a six-foot, some are made out of vinyl, some are made out of wood. We're trying to establish a, a, a.
Continuity.
An overlay so you could have continuity.
Now, the, the intent is to, uh, would be, if you're okay with it, table yours until we get this whole thing worked out, which basically you just stand down until December, but we'll keep you in the loop.
Number seven is the first meeting.
Let's make it the second, just to give.
November second?
The, the second meeting. I know that's close to Christmas or whatever, but.
Yeah.
Uh, let, let's do it just to give.
What date is that?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Still get it in this year or whatever.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. December 20th, December 21st will be fine. And that was my mistake. We have one committee meeting and two commission meetings. So my intent was to ask for the 21st. So I thank you for that, Mr. Vice Chair. That'd be the request from staff that you postpone this until your December 21st meeting.
We're just going to make a motion to table this until December 21st. Meantime, we'll come back with an overlay for the whole area.
Yes, sir.
It'd be wise for folks not to build.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion on this file VA 211003 to postpone, table the meeting, variance for December 21st meeting.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Legal matters.
Illegal matters.
A request for a committee, I don't know, six years, it might happen once.
We had one.
Nine.
Oh.
One in seven years.
That's right.
Any other public comments? We have executive session, we have one item, and I don't think we need to. Right now.
I make a motion to approve $120,000 to SA Limited Liability Tax Map, Parcel 2920, 2921, 2922, for right-of-way permanent and temporary easement for Horizon South Parkway Road Widening Project.
Second. Questions? If anybody raise your right hand?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adjourn.
Second. If anybody raise your right hand? Thank you.